Okay. Adam, that was just small. The. Hey, Tom. Oh. You. Good.
Here we go. I'd like to call to honor the Wesley Town Council, Council Workshop for September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five. All councils are present, along with the town clerk, town manager, and town solicitor. First on the agenda are citizens' comments. These citizens' comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and can be on any topic, not necessarily the the topic on our agenda for short-term rental review. Yeah, got her now. First, we have a sign-up sheet that will go down, and anybody else in the audience can speak after that. First is Brenda Hagenson.
Brenda Hagenson, Hobart Street. Brenda Hagenson, Hobart Street. I understand everyone has investments and everyone wants to have an additional income, make some money. Great for everyone and how they do it. I live in a very tight neighborhood, very limited parking. Most houses have one space, you know, on-site, the rest is street parking, and we're very close to each other. I am in about like the twenty houses in my little area, three of them, and now I think possibly four are short-term rentals. A family just informed me, actually on my way here tonight, that they have to move out because their landlord is gonna, it's more profitable for them to short-term rent. On a personal level, I, so I struggle with parking even this weekend on Saturday. They were in front of my house. There's no curb there. They're on my grass. Someone got, did last weekend, again across the street for parking. I have a big issue at town beach passes. So I live here. I contribute to the community. I work here. I volunteer. And sometimes you can't even get on the beach because they're allowed to have cottage passes. I'm not saying they can't go to the beach. Can't they go to state beach or can't they, because they're not regulated when you pull in, they let you in any of the parking lots regardless. They're only supposed to let you in one. Many short-term rentals allow pets. Dogs is a big animal that tends to travel. They're unfamiliar with the surroundings, the scents. Many times they will just bust through the door. I could show you footage on my own cameras, living across the street from one. But people aren't necessarily always cleaning up after their dogs' place. And I know residents don't do that either all the time. But the scents in the yards, they set off the dogs next door because everything's constantly new to them versus if it was two dogs that live next door, they kind of get used to each other. It's a little more friendlier. Speeding through the neighborhoods, they don't know the back, you know, the little roads that we have, the stop signs that come up, or just where you're supposed to slow down on a turn. But as far as, that's my own personal reasons, what is happening to the town is very upsetting. The numbers in our schools are down because there's no place for people to rent. It's not that there's no rentals. There's a high percentage that are now short-term rentals, and it's driving families out of here. How are we gonna stay afloat if we don't have kids coming back? They can't come back. They can't, there's no place for them to live. It's not because there's lack of affordable housing. There's lack of housing because of these short-term rentals. Places, it's hard to keep employment. You know, most places are hiring. They just can't keep people here to even work and support our own town. I know where I work, you know, it's hard to keep people, you know, back here because there's just no place for them to live affordably for many of the jobs that this town does have to offer. Yeah, so I'm not saying to end them, but reconsider some of the regulations. A one-to-three-night stay is, that's a hotel. Two-plus weeks, have landlord on-site. I can tell you, the guy across the street from me wasn't real happy this summer when I had company over and they were awakened as well by the house across the street. The police were just like, you know, you have to figure it out. And until I called the guy eight times and he finally answered, who addressed the problem, I mean, not fair. So just consider those things and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Heather Riefinger.
Hello. My name is Heather Riefinger. I've lived here for over eighteen years. I served on the Westerly Little League Board for about ten of those years. I was a treasurer for five years. I now have a owner-occupied Airbnb here in Westerly. It's at two, three, four High Street. My partner and I.
I'm sorry, could you give us your address?
Two, three, four High Street.
Thank you. I'm sorry, interrupt.
It's okay. We've had over a hundred rentals in the last year that we've had the Airbnb, and I don't really feel like a lot of transient people are renting it. We have a lot of grandparents. I have a lot of people from Florida that have family here that come up for holidays, that come up to visit them at the beach, come to stay here to visit family for birthdays, for family reunions, all different kinds of things. And I don't really find a lot of people being disrespectful. They come here, they spend a lot of money, they go downtown, they spend money at our businesses, at our restaurants. United Theater recently went into business with a company in Nashville. They're having very nice events. And I have a lot of people coming to stay at the Airbnb to go to those events. A lot of those events are Thursday nights, Friday nights, Saturday nights. People are coming down from Boston. People are flying in from Tennessee to go to those events. And those are a lot of the people that I have staying for single nights. Most of the people are coming here to go have dinner downtown. They don't want to drive home. Maybe they're doing a little drinking, and that's a part of it. And my Airbnb is walkable to those areas and to the restaurants. And I know, living here as long as I have, it was pretty much a ghost town downtown when I first moved in here in the wintertime. Now I'm seeing hustle and bustle, and we just went out with family the other night, and it was a Wednesday, and we went to Gaetano's, and then we went for a walk downtown. It was lovely. I don't feel that a lot of the Airbnbs are causing these problems. Also, I want to add, we've had the apartment for many years, and we've had it empty. And the reason why we had it empty was because we have family that comes and visits. We have family in Florida. Our grandparents both live in Florida. They come up and use it. So in order to have, you can't really have both. You can't have a long-term rental and also have your family in and out when you want to. So we're able to STR our rental when our family isn't using it. So for us, it's still profitable, but also we block off weeks, maybe even months, for our parents to come and stay. And that allows us to do that. If we have a long-term rental, we wouldn't be able to do that. And it's not something that we did in the past. And I do feel like a lot of, there's quite a few of us that do that. The reason why we don't long-term rent is because we are still using it for our family in and out. I, I, I live next door to a long-term rental, and I'm very disappointed that the long-term rentals are not being held to the same safety standards that my apartment is being held to. I've gotten the fire inspection. I did everything that I was supposed to do. We had to put a railing on our stairs. I have neighbors next to me. They have two stairwells for their apartments. They don't have the railings I have. They don't have the safety standards I have. They don't have the fire standards that I have. And I just, I think that they just should be held to the same safety standards. So if we're going to charge for the long-term rentals, the $500 fee, I think there should be something implemented also for a long-term rental and held to the same safety standards as well. So that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Colleen Zarick.
Hello, I'm Colleen Zarick. I'm at Six Cobblestone Lane in Westerly. So this is interesting because, so I am a resident of Westerly. I grew up in Westerly. I've come back now after like thirty years. And I have been living at Cobblestone since 2020. And I'm second marriage. My husband has a house in Massachusetts right over the border. So I'm, I spend more than half my time in Westerly. I also go back to Massachusetts. So I'm renting my house on the Cobblestone on the weekends through Airbnb. I only allow six people, no pets. Been doing it for four years now, never had one issue. You know, everybody spends money in Westerly, has been very respectful of the property, haven't had any neighbor problems. I also bought a second property on Westminster Street, fifty-one Westminster Street, which I, this summer, I did one year Airbnb. I changed it over to a long-term rental this year because of all the stuff that's going on. I'm like, you know what? It's not worth it. I can't, this is just too much. So I changed it over to a long-term rental. And I, you know who I ended up with is an eighty-one-year-old woman in the house who rented. So the elderly are having just the same issue as families are having, that they can't find a place to live as well in Westerly. So I guess my argument here is that it's not just about shutting down the short-term rentals to try to bring families in. You also have an elderly situation here where people can't move, that the housing, they're stuck. My parents live next to Chris Duhamel on Elm Street. Two people living there. I'm trying to get them out of there. But there's nowhere to go, you know. So anyway, so that's, I kind of wanted to mention that, you know, that they kind of have this argument about, you know, families being closed out, but it's, you gotta look at the other side of this as well. So I guess a couple of my issues are, number one, the flat, I guess the fee. I don't see how it's fair to charge the same fee to everybody when you've got issues like, because Brenda just mentioned with people that are, that are abusing the system and allowing too many guests. You know, fine, if you have a certain, you know, too many guests, they should be, they should have a higher fee, or they should be kicked out of the, I mean, if there's too many complaints, whatever, you know, I guess, you know, there should be kind of, some kind of repercussion against the people that are abiding by the system. And I think if you start discriminating between the housing line, you're gonna have people go underground and just rent and not go through the system. And I think everybody here is trying to work with the system, trying to find a way to make this work. And so I would ask for people's consideration with that, or possibly consider a grandfathering situation, you know, where if you're already there and you don't have any issues, that you would be grandfathered in. So that's about all, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Chair. Thank you, Colleen. Chris, so letting me know you, parents live next to.
Only because this is a workshop and a little more informal. I just, I know that Heather said that she's, she lives here and it's an owner-occupied Airbnb. I'm just trying to keep track. What was her name? Con?
Zarick.
Colleen. I know you mentioned that you're married and you're here for half a year and your husband lives in Massachusetts. Are you a Rhode Island resident or, you follow the Rhode Island resident? Thank you.
Next on our list is Lisa Bernal.
Hi, I'm Lisa Barraro. I'm at fifty-six Elm Street in Westerly.
Sorry, mispronounced your name.
Sorry. I have a rental property on Eight New Old Terrace. I was born and raised in Westerly. I've lived here for fifty out of sixty years of my life. I'd like the committee here in the workshop to consider the reasonableness of any assessment that the short-term rentals having on overall housing situation. Still have yet to hear exactly what it is we're trying to solve here. But there's approximately four hundred short-term rentals per the registry versus almost eleven thousand residential properties per the Westerly tax roll. So I wonder how much sense it is that short-term rental is truly having an outsized impact on any issues that we're thinking about, whether that's shortage of affordable housing, and are there other factors involved? With respect to the comments that were previously made about short-term rental issues, whether that's noise, dogs, neighbors, et cetera, that's exactly what your registry is for. It's an enforcement issue and not a regulation issue. This is an entirely separate thing here that you're trying to deal with in terms of your short-term rentals. In looking at the lack of affordable housing, what about the lack of significant high-paying industry or jobs in the area, especially when compared to other areas that are a commutable distance away? I personally commuted from Westerly to Boston for twenty-eight years, so I understand exactly what's going on with the lack of affordable jobs in the area. I also have to think of the overall increase in mortgage interest rates, which has reduced the number of properties that are going for sale or certainly made it more competitive, let alone the number of out-of-state residents who are coming in and purchasing what to them is relatively inexpensive property here. So I do think there's other factors that should be considered with respect to the proposed ordinance as it currently exists, and I don't know if that's being reconsidered. But there is this arbitrary line. We've spoke, I personally have spoken about this at other council meetings, whereas I'm in the Mousquamocut Fire District. I happen to be north of the Shore Road and would be cut off and treated differently from other taxpayers in the Fire District, which I don't think is fair. You have Avondale currently slotted to be short-term rental as well. I'm walkable distance to the ocean. Avondale is not. That likewise does not seem fair. I'd like the committee to also consider the fact that Rhode Island just passed legislation which is increasing the taxes on short-term rentals by six percent in, starting in twenty twenty-six. So as a rough estimate, if you think about short-term rentals, if, for the four hundred that are there, if they each arguably pull in $25,000 a year, the additional money that is slotted to go to the state of Rhode Island to address housing issues that I suspect this committee is interested in as well, is approximately $600,000 coming just from the four hundred rentals here in Westerly. That's not a small amount. And currently, the total tax drag on anybody who's seeking to do short-term rental here in Westerly, starting in twenty-six, is fourteen percent. I did a quick Google search to see what other tax, what other services or products are currently taxed cumulatively at fourteen percent within the state. There's not a lot. Be like your cell phone, motor vehicle taxes, some other transportation taxes. So I'd like the, I'd like everyone to think about that. And currently, in the state of Rhode Island, the tax that I was just referring to that was just passed, will apply equally to short-term rental and hotels. Whereas here in this town, if you're trying to raise additional revenue, one other thing for you to think about is you're currently charging short-term rental property owners $500 a year and hotels seventy-five. So you are treating those two packages differently, which is very different from the state of Rhode Island. So those were sort of some of the comments that I wanted to share as you think through how it is you're going to approach any regulation that you're looking to put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gina Patterson.
Good evening. Gina Patterson, actually Marone now, again. I'm at thirty-three Shore Road. And I guess I'm a little concerned because I don't understand what we're solving for. And I'm not trying to be smart alec. I genuinely don't understand what the board feels compelled to solve, four hundred short-term rentals for properties. As Lisa said, we've got, what, eleven thousand properties in this, in this town? We are a tourist industry. I mean, that's what we do. That's our thing. And I think a lot of you remember when this town was the site of dead, you know, thirty years ago. We've built it back up. People are back here. And I don't understand why we would want to jeopardize that. That said, like Lisa, I commute to Boston. It's a miserable existence, but you do what you gotta do to pay the bills. I have a project management background, so I look at things from a metric standpoint. I don't see what we've done here to justify uprooting people's livelihoods. And we are on a slippery slope. We are telling people how they can use their property, their personal private property. And I understand regulations. God knows, Westerly has a ton of them, right? And people, I think, generally follow the rules. As Lisa and the others had said, we have a registration that addresses all of these issues: noise, pollution, you know, parties, alcohol, obnoxious behavior. We have all of that. But we also have that with long-term rentals down at the beach. I mean, this is, this is a beach community. This will continue to be a beach community long after all of these things are in place. I just want to understand what this board is using for a metrics and a methodology that they feel that they have to kind of really impose a will on a collective that most, I would argue, don't even know what we're doing. No one reads the newspaper. No one is looking at your website to determine that this is what we're doing. And then I think the other thing is, I think we're forgetting that long, short-term rentals are dual functionality, right? And we all have known someone in the last thirty or forty years where people have gone and they use the short term in the summer, but then they use the rental for winter for people that are of, you know, low income. There's plenty of people down at the beach that use those summer, summer places for, for the winter months. And then finally, I can't stress this enough, and I don't mean to be preachy or on some soapbox, but, you know, we are so divided as a country, and the trust in our government and the overreach is at an all-time high. We don't trust our elected officials to do the right thing for the collective. This, I would argue, is dangerously close to an overreach. And I would ask each and every board to let us know, in the way that you're asking us, if we have short-term rentals and how many people are in a property, do you have a short-term rental next to you? Does your family member have a short-term rental next to you? Does your extended family have one next door to you? Does your extended family have one next door to you? If you are not independent of this issue, you should be stepping away from this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the sign up sheets. If, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak, this is a good time. Yes. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hello, everybody. I've been a town resident for 18 years. My name is John Donlin. I'm sorry to say I don't personally know any of you, but I want to thank you all for being counselors. I know it's not an easy job sometimes. I have written up what I'm gonna say, pass this into you.
Could you state your addresses off as well? There has been a lot of me for addresses.
So most everything I'm gonna say is in the letter I just provided. My wife, my wife is Margaret or Peg Donlin. Again, I'm John Donlin. We've lived for the last 18 years at 19 Washington Avenue. Washington Avenue is off of Beach Street, right alongside Riverbend Cemetery. The red VFW post is on the corner. I've been trimming the hedges there for the last 17 years voluntarily. The first year we moved here, they were kind of a mess coming up on the 4th of July, so I did it then and I've been doing it ever since happily. But Washington Avenue, it's a dead end at the Pocket Tuck River. There are 13 houses on our street, including three, two, several, well, three, two family houses. Our, our home is a single family home. We've lived in it for the entire 18 years. We live here year round, full time. Last summer, we made the decision to try operating an Airbnb out of a portion of our house. We took a back family room with a full bath and we converted it into an Airbnb space. We took out a $10,000 personal loan and used the proceeds to do that. It's a very nice Airbnb space. I would actually invite any, any and all of you, if you would like to, to come and visit it and see what one of these Airbnbs that you're regulating, you know, looks like up close and personal. I would offer you an overnight stay, but that might be coercion. So, you know, probably the best we can offer is a cup of coffee if you want to come look at it. But we'd be happy to have you come. We can meet you at the VFW parking lot and walk three houses down the street. The space is at the back of our house. The guests enter through a private keyed entry. It's a 500 square foot space. Fireplace, cathedral ceiling, ceiling fan, you know, full bath. And I've got to tell you, so we've been running it now for a year. We started last September. We have had roughly 35 guests in that time. We haven't gotten rich at it. We've probably made between eight and $9,000 so far, which is nice income for a retired couple to help with the increasing costs that we all see. And we didn't expect to get rich at it, but the best part of it for us has been the wonderful guests that we've had. Honestly, yeah, the people and as one of the other folks said, some of them come, you know, from, from New York, from Florida, from faraway places. And they're coming here because they have friends or family in Westerly. They're coming here because they love our beaches. We've had people come and they love our downtown. They come back and they talk to us about the restaurants they went to and the strings of bars. And so it's a great place for people to come to. So they're coming and they're staying in what used to be our family room at the back of our house. It was never intended to be rented out to anyone. We don't feel that we're impacting the housing stock in Westerly. Cause we've never had an intention to rent it out full time. But most of our guests come and they'll stay one, two. We've had a few three nights and we had one four night. And that's basically what it consists of. And mostly it's the weekends, hardly ever during the week, unfortunately. But we have just found it to be a very positive experience for us in terms of meeting these people and they come to celebrate birthdays, anniversaries. We had a couple that were presenters at Virtue Art in the park. We've had people that are coming, again, as I said, for friends and family in the area. We had people surprise us with a book came the day before Christmas Eve to say they wanted to come spend Christmas Eve in town. But it's been great. We've had no noise problems. We've had no routiness. Sometimes we almost feel like we need to call the police for a wellness check because we've had people in the unit and we haven't seen any sign of life for the last nine hours. Eventually they do come out and we have a really nice king sized bed that everybody raves about. Our neighbors are mostly blind to the fact that we're even operating an Airbnb out of our home. There's been no complaints. If you look on Airbnb's website, our unit is called Riverbend Guest Suite. We've had 30 reviews by our guests. All of them have been five star. They love the property and we put a lot of attention and care into it to try and make it be something people would love. Cause we know what we love when we go somewhere. And so we try to make our place what, what we would like. And it's been a great experience and they come here and they go downtown and they spend money. You know, they come from other places and they do contribute to the economy here in Westerly. Because I told you, they tell us, you know, we went to the steakhouse, we went to Perks and Corks, we went here and there and, and it's great. So I would ask you to at least look up our site on the, on the information is there and you can check it out there and give us a call. Come in, I think that if you're gonna regulate us, you should see what we offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Yes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kristin Ulrich. I think I was here one other time and I did speak. So thank you all for your time and I appreciate everything and all the hard work that you all put into your roles here. I actually thought we were like workshopping and not having like this type of a forum, but I'm happy to speak. And I think I will be echoing what a lot of these folks here have said tonight. I have my Airbnb at 74 Beach Street and I've been running the Airbnb since 2018. I've seen, I think the number is about 350 guests to date. So many of them are either former Westerly residents or they are family members or friends of people that live in this area. I've had people just in the past two months coming for funerals, for celebrations, for last minute needs to be here to help out with a family member. We see a lot of people, I'm just gonna continue to echo here for tourist reasons, they're going to the beach, they're spending money. We've had people come and stay that have been performing at the theater. They need a place to sleep for a night or two. And we don't have a ton of affordable options in our town for short stays. There's not a lot of hotels and not a lot, I mean, not everyone wants to stay at a motel. We've had, like, if I can tell you, I've maybe had two instances where I've had an issue at the house. And in both circumstances, I was down there so fast the guests had were spinning because I don't put up with it. And I have a very strict policy. It's all written out, what we accept, what we don't, how many people. And I have not had a problem. People are lovely. They're so happy to be here. They're so happy to be in our town and have a place to stay. So it's been a great experience and I'd love to continue to operate the Airbnb. I think we spoke about the ratio of rentals, short term rentals to housing in the town. And it is a fairly small number. I could see if things continue to escalate and escalate, maybe there, you would want some parameters around saying, how many? What's that percentage that our town should have? And then in that case, maybe it becomes like a liquor license and whoever, you know, this many people have them and you're not giving out another one until someone comes off the list. There's fees that we are paying that I think was brought up in the last, that it was going not just toward some technology to do the tracking, but also toward maybe more monitoring, right? So if you've got renters, and I do, I feel terrible. I can't remember who the woman was that stood up and you've had a really bad experience. I feel terrible. Oh, so they can't come in and address? Yeah. Yeah. They have a person. They need to have a person. Yeah. Yeah. But I also see that with, I know, and I just use Airbnb. I don't use any of the other platforms, but there is this check and balance, right? I rate them, they rate me. So we rarely have a problem because guess what? If someone comes in, they trash my place, they cause it, the police have to come, they make a lot of noise. What kind of review am I gonna give them? And not a good review. So we've had excellent guests. We really have not had a problem. So I think there's this other piece of it, like, well, who's, who's following the rules? Who's paying the fee? Who's, who's signed up? Who's doing it, you know, behind the town's back? There's probably a, a bunch, I would guess, that might not be paying, might not be doing all the things that we're doing to make sure we're providing a good, safe spot for people to come stay. But really, we, we have not, we have not had any issues. And if there are, I take care of it immediately. I think if there's gonna be an issue with people, that is the, 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 I want to say the troublemakers and I'm trying to seek out a good word for it. But if you've got repeat offenders who have guests that are not following the rules, well, then they're, that, that owner is not doing their job to manage their property correctly. If you've got someone who's constantly having bad guests and then you have a bunch that always have great guests, then we're looking at kind of another problem. So I think my time is running up.
Yeah.
Kristin, before, before you run off, we get a, we get addresses for the, for the clerk.
I think I gave it 74 Beach.
You said that, but then you said 74 Beach was the Airbnb and you had to run down there.
74 Beach is the Airbnb. I'm at 34 Rockridge.
34 Elm Ridge?
Rockridge, 34 Rockridge in Westerly and the rental's at 74.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Good evening. Peter Alter. Live Painter Road. My wife and I, we run a short term rental, 31 R Langworthy. Been doing that for a couple of years now. Was a property that was purchased by a relative of ours who was gonna retire and live out their years right adjacent to our property. But they passed and we purchased the property from the estate. So we have a mortgage on this property and we are trying to keep the lights on and keep this property in the family. We think that the restrictions on the short term rentals are unfair. We didn't understand how the fee went from $50 to $500. That's quite a jump. And all the other excuses, you know, the issues with the low income housing. You know, I don't think that's a burden that the short term rentals, especially the responsible ones in this room need to bear. If I had projects where low income housing has been proposed and they all get shot down. You know, talk about the Weepaw Golf Course project. You know, that perfect opportunity for short, low income housing. And that's just being met by wall after wall. I know you shake your head, but I mean, that's a perfect opportunity right there. So one thing that this ordinance change really needs, it needs to be worded where irresponsible and non-resident owners are penalized or not allowed to hold a short term rental permit. And that should be one of the proposed changes to that ordinance. You need to punish the people that are not responsible, not the responsible people that are in this room. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? All right. Well, thank you for all coming out and giving us this input on short term rentals. Now it's time for council's response, if you wish, or you can wait till the meeting begins, whatever. Whatever you like.
Thank you all for coming out. I just want to say I am a short term rental user. I don't own a short term rental. I don't live near one. But I'm actually on your side, so I don't think you want me to refuse myself from the vote. Also, I understand everybody's concerns. I would be a little leery of the noise and the people, the strangers coming in. But as a short term rental person, I've been going back to the same place for years and years and years. We're talking 30 years, one place. They wouldn't have us back if they weren't, if we weren't respectful. So with that being said, I, I know that, that just that one issue right there would stop. You would not allow that person back. They're gonna destroy, they're gonna make noise, the police have to be called. You know, that's a big no-no. For anybody that does rent short term rentals, you don't want this strike against you because like you said, you can put a report out online. It says, don't rent to these people. No good. And so I'm with you on that. I, I don't, I think it's, it would be remiss of you not to be paying attention to your short term rentals. So I get you on that. I also am for less government. I don't think we have any right to tell you what to do at your home. So that's where I basically sit on this whole deal. There's those that will disagree with me, however, as a politician, I don't want you in my underwear drawer. So I wouldn't want to be in yours. So thank you all for coming out.
Thank you. Other counselors? Council Petro?
Other than Peter, who thought it was a good idea to put 240 units up on a golf course and Kristin Aldrich, I think she was the other one that has a second house. This ordinance would not affect any of you. It would all be business as usual. It wasn't written to hurt anyone who wants Airbnb their own home or needs a few extra dollars to, to help make it. That was specifically written into the ordinance to protect everybody in this room, albeit the last two that spoke. You have a second house as well? Well, it is a blanket statement. It. Okay, well, that's a. What I'm saying is, I'll, I'll, I'll go back on that, right? So when I'm, I'm out of time, so I can't. So I'm just gonna say this. I grew up, first year of my life living in Cranial Ave, then I moved over to Solapine Way. So I grew up around short term rentals before they were called short term rentals my whole life. That, that's, and it's because I was close to the beach. But whenever I came into town, I felt like I was part of a town. It's a whole different community, okay? It wasn't, it wasn't different names every day. It was communities, it was neighborhoods. This is, this has bled all the way through town and it's only been the last four or five years. So what we're trying to do is bring Wesley back to what a lot of you said, you remember Wesley 40, 50 years. We're trying to bring Wesley back to what he used to be, where short term rentals stayed, where they, where they helped the economy, where they helped the people that, that had businesses down there and it was for the beach community. So, but we also wrote into this ordinance that anyone anywhere, and I mean anywhere, north of Shore Road. And I think hopefully we include all of Shore Road. It was short sighted, they don't only say south of Shore Road. If we include a little bit, the arbitrary line somebody talked about, could have been a little higher. But anyone who wants to short term rent to their own house, who lives in their own house, we're gonna allow it. If you need to make a few extra dollars, sir, $8,000, $8,000, $9,000 a year, absolutely. God bless. But we're trying to stop and the only people that we're trying to stop are people from out of town coming in, buying up our housing stock and using, and using it as little mini hotels because we have, we fight up here all the time about low income housing. On and on and on about 22 units of Robin Hills. What good is building 22 units of Robin Hills if the next 22 units that come on the market get bought up by somebody from New Jersey and New York and come off the market as short term rentals? So I think Brenda said it, and she's not here now, that at this rate, there will be no families left in Westerly. Just a matter of time. So this has to be done in order to protect, protect our town. And I hope that, and most of you will never be affected by this. You know, I would say 80% of you won't be affected by this because we're not trying to hurt mom and pop organizations, anything like that, mom and pop houses. It's only geared towards stopping out of towners from buying multiple houses in our town to use as businesses or slash hotels. And that's all this ordinance is. Thank you. It is housing.
If, if. We can just have, we can have a debate. Mr. LaPietra doesn't speak for the whole town council. So. Yeah, there's no ordinance before us either. So there, there's a lot of discussion that is needed, a lot of listening that is needed. And that's what this workshop is supposed to be about. So there's not, there's nothing that's been settled. Any other counselors wish to speak? Council Healy?
Thank you guys all for coming. You guys are exactly who I hoped showed up. People that are doing this, they live here, they're bringing in people for things like funerals, get togethers, families. They typically, it sounds like a lot of it is on your already owned property. It doesn't sound like somebody in the audience came up and has a, you know, three multifamily houses and are using those as full short time housing and stuff. That's, I, I want to echo some of what Council LaPietra said. We do have differences on this. But out of all of the topics that we've come to as a council, this is something that him and I do see close to eye to eye on. Because everybody, I don't want this to affect. Um, because everybody, I don't want this to affect our everyday resident. I would love to see there be stipulations in the ordinance, which is what I'm hoping that we do here. The ordinance that's written and was put in our, that is the original, and one edit, and that edit came, I believe, in like 23, 24, um, from Councilor LaPietra. So we have, when you look at this stuff, think of it as a blank sheet. Um, there are things that I would like to see, such as, um, kind of looking at this as a metric. You have somebody that has one single-family home, and they live there year-round, and they are supplementing some income, or they created space in their home for whatever reason that they wanted to, and that is what they are using it for. I don't want anything to change for you. Nothing. I don't want, if you, if you have an in-law, if you have, that type of short-term housing is what is valid and bringing to our economy consistently, year after year after year. What isn't is LLCs. And unfortunately, Brenda did leave, but she mentioned in her neighborhood, which I'm familiar with, um, somebody being, you know, the home was bought, it's gonna be flipped, and the person that was residing there isn't gonna be residing there. It's one person. I'm not coming, saying that this is, you know, all affordable housing. It's one person, but that's one person. That's one Wesley person. Now, what, what are they gonna do? Do they get to stay here? Are their kids in our schools? There's so many things that go into it. It's only one person, yes, but it makes a difference. Um, so Gina, you had asked, what are we looking to solve? Um, I am looking to solve a future problem. I am looking to solve the increase that we've seen since, I always put it on 2020, because that's kind of when, when everything shut down. Folks from, uh, New York came to stay here full-time. So in my mind, 2020 is where I'm at. The change that we've seen from then to now, and then what we're gonna see from now into another five or six years. If we don't find something that works for our residents, and for the people that are here, and the families that are here, the elderly that are here, if we don't find something now, then we're going to be running for our dear lives in a few short years. Um, so a lot of the ideas that I have are really limiting it down to, if, if somebody, I, I wouldn't want to see somebody that owns seven different properties have one license and get to do short-term rentals on seven different properties. I think everybody that has a short-term rental, it should be a person. I do not think it should be an LLC. I think that it should be limited to one. I might be able to even squeeze two in there. Um, but I think that should be definitely figured out. Um, you know, we have a really good system, I'll, I'll wrap it up, I promise. We have a really good system, and Town Manager Lacy has put together a lot of stipulations. The things that were mentioned, like noise and dogs and trash, that is all in here. And our police department is very, very versed in how to handle the situations as they've come, which, as mentioned, has not been a lot, which is great. We want to keep it at that. We just don't want it to roll and go crazy like we've seen in other coastal communities up and down the coast. Um, so I am all for really bringing this to the zoning area of, of municipality. Um, doing special-use permits, doing, um, just zoning permits, and making sure that, um, a building official needs to come out and check it. And then I will echo something, because this is something that I want to keep doing. I really want to see all rentals on this level. And it's something that I might be all by myself up here on. But I really, really think that we need regulation. Am I allowed to take that question, because she's been so patient?
Uh, let's keep going. I mean, everyone has a, want a chance to speak? The, the prob, the problem with the dialogue is, we gotta have our starting points, we have to listen. It's not a workshop, it's by council rules. I'm so, I'm sorry to disappoint. But we'll, we'll have more chances to speak, please. Did you want to finish? Okay. Okay, you guys are done? Councilor Shalaba?
Um, thank you all for coming. Um, the short-term rentals for me has always been about, it needs to be town-wide. I don't want to draw a line in the sand. I think that that's wrong. Um, I've said that from day one. I was also never a fan of increasing the fees to $500, because we had so many people that didn't pay the $50. And I was concerned that people were not gonna pay the $500, and how do we find, how do we find them? Um, but that being said, I feel that, you know, we're, we're talking about limiting the people coming from out of state, taking our inventory, things like that. But, you know, we keep forgetting, there's a lot of people in Wesley that own multiple houses, that rent them out, that do short-term rentals, that, that do a lot of things, especially in the North End. You see it a lot in the North End, and it's the same half a dozen people that live here, that do that. So to state that, you know, we want to stop the people coming from out of state, well, have we actually looked at the people that have come from out of state that have actually become residents here for 20, 30, or more years? Most people aren't all from Wesley that have this. They've come from somewhere else. Um, so we do need to do something. I'm not quite sure what, but is, but for me to start, it has to be fair for everybody. It has to be town-wide. We have to start it that way. And, um, I kind of hate regulations, especially when it's your own property, and you pay taxes on your own property, and you should be able to do legally what you can do with your own property. So I, I kind of have a little bit of a problem with that. But, you know, I've seen what was said down at, at, at the beach, where the hotels become the winter rentals after the, the Airbnbs, for the people that are either college students, or they're just having home problems or whatever. And they know it's a temporary situation, they know they have to leave in May for the summer, find alternative housing and stuff. It's such a big thing that we have to do and, and figure out. So, um, you know, thank you for your input, and, um, you know, just keep, keep talking to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, two councilors. Mike, are you ready? All right, but I'll let Bill go. Bill?
Makes no difference to me. You wanna, you wanna go first? It doesn't matter. All right. No big deal. Um, I'll say a couple of things now, because I may have to leave the meeting early. Um, this is, again, short-term rentals, fewer than 28 consecutive days. So people rent for 29 or 30 or more, it doesn't apply. Um, in general, owner-occupied, um, short-term rent, it doesn't bother me a bit. I'm good with that. As long as it's actually owner-occupied and, and not something on paper, and people living somewhere else. Owner-occupied, not the issue. Um, some concerns that I have are people who are buying up housing stock and renting them all the time. That, I think, is what, um, a lot of the communities are facing, with a limited housing stock. You know, just on the news again this weekend, that there's, um, not enough housing nationwide. So, um, so how do we get, get a handle on this? Do we want to become a nation of rentals? You know? Home ownership's been a big thing for a lot of people. I know, and a lot of, a lot of people are, are fine with renting, are rented for a long time. Um, and I've lived in different countries and states. And, and, uh, even before short-term rentals was a thing, I was familiar with backpackers and people staying in somebody's bedroom and having breakfast and moving on the next day. So, um, so I'm familiar with that. But it's become this big phenomenon now. Big, big business. And, and it's made, made it difficult for the mom-and-pops, the, the owner-occupied. And I completely get, you know, trying to get some extra money to pay for taxes and fees, everything else. Um, so hopefully, we'll, we'll get there, and, and hopefully, we'll get something that, um, is acceptable to at least most people. And we have to stay within the legal bounds, and there are a couple of court cases that are still pending. Um, so how do we do that? And how do we, and part of the reason why we did, well, a major reason why this workshop is here is to hear from the public and to have some dialogue. And yes, we're starting out with citizens' comments and council's response, and, and, and in a little open, they'll get a little more dialogue, and, and that's perfectly acceptable for, for a workshop. And hopefully, be able to, um, maybe not come to a final decision tonight, but hopefully have, uh, some meaningful, good discussion, and some good ideas. And this isn't all right or all wrong, it's just, maybe there's something that we can get to. And maybe somebody will say something that sparks another idea or suggestion that, that is doable and complies with the state law. So, yeah, thank you for coming, and there will be a little more dialogue, I hope. Thank you.
Councilor Nimire?
Thank you all for coming. Um, I want to say thank you to Brenda, who was here, uh, for telling how she has experienced this. I know people have come to me talking about, um, the ways to transform their neighborhood for the worse. But I also appreciate all the rest of you who have come here. You, you know, followed all the rules, you haven't done anything wrong, and now we're hovering, we're hanging this over your head like a sword to Damocles. It's, that's tough. Um, and I hope, I'll echo what Councilor Ayalo said. I hope we can find something that is a solution for everyone, not just one side or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my turn. Um, yeah, workshop, this is a good chance to, to informally speak within, within the council itself, and when the people come into the podium and having a dialogue back after it. But our rules are kind of hamstrung about, we don't sit around a table, we don't, we don't go back and forth. And that's probably a good thing at this point, because we really need to listen to what people, um, have, have to offer. And I, I say that from both sides of the aisle. We heard some people that were not in favor of short-term rentals, and we have many people that came tonight anyways, that are very much in favor of short-term rentals and the rules that regard short-term rentals, and not to, uh, have a detrimental effect to the neighborhoods where they operate short-term rentals. So, you know, that positive side needs to get out, out as, as much as we hear the, the horror stories. And I think we all get the horror stories, uh, on, on emails or on phone calls, that this, uh, house next to me, um, they have 20 cars in their neighborhood, and there's, there's people lying all over the place. I mean, who wants to live next to that? You know, and, and these are in an affluent neighborhood of Miss Quamiket. Um, who wants to live next to that? So it, it goes to the better question of what are the standards? What are the standards for short-term rental and the operation of short-term rental? And I, I loved what I heard, that the, uh, the registration is really to log in, who's, who's having these short-term rentals, and are these places a problem? And to call the police and to call minimum housing so that they can be rectified immediately, so that they're not duplicated and, and do ruin a neighborhood. So, yeah, we need, we're historically allowing short-term rentals, especially south of Shore Road, but they also have to be, uh, standards to be maintained so that the families can continue to return and continue to enjoy the, the area. Um, the expectations of, uh, of running a rental apartment or a short-term rental apartment are the same. You, you have to have, uh, lead certification, you have to have fire inspections. Um, there are minimum housing requirements, there's insurance inspections that are, that are had. These, these are highly-regulated properties. They're, they're not the same as single-family home properties, where a lot of these rules aren't enforced or, or don't, they all apply, but they're not, they're not inspected. Um, so rental housing, either long-term or short-term, they have the same rules. If you find that a short-term rental is not conforming with those rules, then they, they, you know, they'll, they'll be cited, they should be cited, and they'll, they'll have, have to comply. Um, that includes, uh, the, the septic system that they're on. If they're, they're on a three-bedroom septic system, and there's those same 20 cars that are in the neighborhood, um, that's certainly going to have an effect on that, on that property and the surrounding environment. Um, that includes the parking, the off-street parking, um, making certain that it complies. Um, so there are minimum housing laws that, that are in effect that can, can be implemented. Um, we're, we're, um, probably gonna see an increase in pressure on short-term rentals with the state House passing the Taylor Swift tax. Uh, a tax that is applied 5% over any portion of the value over $1 million. So there's gonna be properties in Avondale and, and, uh, Squamiket, you know, all, all the shoreline areas that are going to have values far north of $1 million that, that might have only used it as a second home, but now they're getting another $5,000 tax bill or an $8,000 tax bill. So, uh, they're gonna be forced or pressured to, to provide for some short-term rental. So that, I think that's coming up. Um, the court case that, uh, that Mr. Connolly has put a memo in front of us on, uh, the resolution of Narragansett and Newport isn't, isn't adjudicated just yet. Uh, so that, that's gonna have an effect on any ordinance that we, we pass, and that's to limit short-term rentals or to restrict the short-term rentals. Both, both, uh, Newport and Narragansett have restrictions on it. Middletown has quite a few restrictions on short-term rentals as well. That's, that's a community that is similar to Wesley, in my opinion. Um, so there's a lot of, lot of, uh, focus on, on short-term rentals across Rhode Island, and something that the town council's gonna have to, have to work with. Uh, to, to say, to say tonight that we have a solution, or we have, you know, a direction that we're going, I mean, that, that direction was established last year. Bill, I, you guys had started to regulate short-term rental, and you came up with a higher fee, which makes it easier for enforcement on the town manager's side. Um, but, but beyond that, um, these issues have, have been around for, for a while. And I think, uh, setting a standard, setting for expectations on how short-term rentals should operate is really, you know, the first step of what we should do. Um, and then as far as limiting them and, and creating special uses through zoning, special-use permits, um, every special-use permit's gonna have to have a number of, of, uh, requirements, expectations in order to fulfill, so that, so you get a license, a short-term rental license. Um, so that's something the council can, can memorialize with, with what works, what's, what's written down. Uh, there's something new that the manager has put forward. Sean, I'll let you speak. Uh, the, um, limit, limit the time that short-term rentals are, can be, uh, can be used. So that's something we should talk about as, as well. Yeah, do you want to help?
I can help. So, so just to give you kind of an overview from, from the perspective that I get, because I get the majority of the complaints. And when this was first adopted, I was on the police side dealing with some of the complaints. But just so everyone's aware, even the people in the audience, 99.999% of the people in town operate their short-term rentals the way they're supposed to. We're dealing with a very small portion of people that don't. So the, the complaints that I get are not from people that are not complying with the rules and regulations of short-term rental, because if they are, the police get called, or we get the whole of the police, and then we deal with it immediately, it gets dealt with. So the issues have nothing to do with people not, the issues of the complaints, like you get, you mentioned, Chris, that, you know, somebody that says the property next to them is a short-term rental, there's 20 cars in the yard, there's no law against that. You have 20 cars in your yard, I guess, if you got your family, or if someone has a picnic for the weekend at their house, you might have 20, 20 cars in your yard. So they have 20 cars, and the, the people that come in to me say they bought a house, spent $800,000 on the house, and this house next door is a short-term rental. And it could be under an LLC or whatever it's under, it's just, it's a short-term rental. The person operating the short-term rental is doing nothing wrong. They're just, they're renting it by the week, or by, you know... The person operating the short-term rental is doing nothing wrong. They're just, they're renting it by the week or by, you know, three, four nights or whatever they're doing. The problem is when people are paying the, the complaint to you, the people that are paying for the family vacation, they invite the whole family. They bring the boat down. They get to bring the, you know, and they're going to the beach every day. They're grilling out every night. They're playing games in the yard, playing, doing nothing wrong. But it changes the dynamic for the neighbor who spent $800,000 on their house, their retirement home, and they have a hotel next door to them. Nobody's doing anything wrong. They're doing everything within compliance of what they, what they're supposed to do, but it's a different dynamic. They didn't choose to live next to a hotel, um, or a commercial-type property that's being rented out on a nightly basis. Now, the, the, it was mentioned by the, um, I, I don't mean to offend you, the older gentleman in the back. He has one off his house. We would never get a complaint on something like that. We wouldn't. He lives in the house. He rents a room off the back of the house. You would never get a complaint on anything like that. There's no harm, no foul. So just to be clear, that this 90, again, almost 100% of them, they're doing nothing wrong. We, we do not have this year, I could count on one hand how many complaints we have of somebody violating, um, any of the outlines of the statute of the short-term rental. We mentioned regulations on, on properties. There's regulations in everyone's property. You have setback lines. You have what your house can be used for. You have residential, commercial. We have more restrictions on properties that you tell you everything you can do, just by the time you can go to sleep at night. So again, we have to do this because if you don't, it becomes a, you have to set some sort of limitations. So some of the feedback that I had gotten from people and, and doing some research and what other communities have done, this isn't a problem just in Westerly. This is a na, well, it's worldwide, I would assume, but it's a national problem that because it's becoming more popular, which is a good thing, right? That's a good thing. It's, it's becoming, these little bit of problems are coming out. Someone mentioned a dog. I never realized, but you think about it, you know, you get somebody new coming every weekend. They're bringing their two dogs with them. You're introducing two dogs to a new neighborhood that might be out. It winds every dog up in the neighborhood. They're going bananas, the neighbor. You, you just don't realize this stuff unless you're actually, unless you're actually living it. So some of the restrictions, you know, that, that have been brought to me and said, hey, can you mention these? Is, which some communities have done nationwide, is put time, time limits, you know, put a 90-day, you can rent your property for 90 days a year or 120 days a year. I don't know, whatever number you come up with. That limits someone from buying a short-term rental property for just short-term rental. They would have to count that somebody mentioned that their family member, they block out days for their family and then they rent it on the off days when their family's not using it. Again, that works perfectly, I guess. But if you put limits on the number of days they can rent it. And, um, and then that regulates you not getting somebody coming into town, just buying up short-term rentals to do long, to full-time short-term rental business. Um, you know, you're always going to get complaints. You're always going to get, but again, if we put some regulations in place to make it a little better, to kind of, you know, regulate what people are doing. I mean, unfortunately, we live in a society of regulations and laws, right? We have to tweak things along the way. And we've been doing this, I think, and Mary could help me, four years now, maybe the registration. It was four years we've been doing it. Again, it's, it's time to look at it and see what's going wrong and not, and, and again, we went up with the fee, um, on it because we, we have a program now that regulates and I can tell you, there isn't, unless somebody's making a deal with a neighbor next door or, or friends somewhere to come on in and rent from them, if they're advertising through any of the sites, and there's a dozen of them, that we know that there's a short-term rental on their advertising and it flags it for, for registration purpose. So we are regu, we are monitoring that to the T. So I can assure you, unless they're doing it on their own, I don't know, Facebook. Well, no, it actually even tracks Facebook. But if they're doing it from some people that have been coming 30 years, like Rose mentioned, she's been going on the same one. You could make a deal with the people yourself and not go through one of the sites and pay all the fees. There's, there are ways around everything, right? But for the most part, so that's kind of the dynamic, I guess, if you guys want to, you know, start the discussion, what's some feeling? I know Alex had a whole PowerPoint. Do you want that up on the screen? No, you do not. Okay. I didn't, I, I, or, you know, Dylan, you had an idea on yours. I mean, how do you start the conversation? Which way to go with it? I mean, that's.
I'd like to respond with just a few, to a few things I heard up here tonight, just to move the conversation along.
Please.
Yeah. Do you want me to talk from here? All right. I'm not going to talk to Rose because I'm, she's not going to come on board no matter what. So I'll just face everybody else. All right. So first, first off, I just want to, the LLC, the LLC myth, it's something that I don't want us to get hung up on because there's, an LLC is, is most of the time you can have a single-member LLC. You can have a partnership. You could have, most of the time it's just a disregarded entity. There's really no difference between LLC and a person. Well, well, okay, but, but, I mean, a lot of people use an LLC just, just to, you know, if there's a slip and fall or something like that. So it does not get hung up on the difference between LLC and a person. There's no legal difference. So it doesn't matter. But it was a good point. I just wanted to clarify that. Then I want to talk to something Mary said about, you know, uh, she wanted to have it town-wide. We have to have all our ordinances town-wide. And I would refute that by saying, looking, there's, there's, uh, plenty of sections in town where you can't park your car on the road. I know I, I could park my car on the road where I live, but if I go down to Watch Hill, Miss Quamiket, we could park, I can't. Uh, there's, there's low-income housing that, that could be built where I am, but by ordinance, you can't. There's probably a dozen ordinances on the books that differentiate where you are in town geographically. So let's not get hung up on, it has to be a town-wide ordinance because different sections of town are, are obviously different. Not a bad idea. I understand where you're coming from. Then I just want to say something, well, to respond to one of Sean's points, for the 90-day limit or the 120-day limit, good, it will help. But yeah, I know it's an idea, but, but once again, I don't think the, the Wump shelters are going to take these families in for 90 days. And, and, you know, for family, it's not going to help establish more families because where do you go for 90 days? Even if it's even for 10 days, that family's got to go out. So I want to try to bring these houses back so that people can rent them year-round. That's kind of the point. And that's going to get to my final point. And I'm talking to the, the Democrats and you guys are very sorry. You, you're in, on the issue of housing and it's, you know, it's a great issue and, and I respect that, you know, I would always agree. Sometimes I say we have limited resources. I might say it or Rose might say it. And you would come in and you would say, Jesus, if I were to do my two years and we were able to build 200 more houses, wow, I won. You know, I did a great job. I got 200 more houses, you know, for affordable families, bring them in. Another ADN East Ave, found another 120 somewhere else. That would be a monumental win for a town council to find that kind of housing. Here's the thing though, i- if we were to pass this ordinance, it would be the equivalent of that. We would find, we would free up these 200 houses for year-round families and we would do it. We would actually save water, save sewage because we don't have 18 people in these houses flushing the toilet all the time. You actually would, our resources would be preserved. And, and without, without having to find 200 more houses, we can possibly get 200 more families in here. That's all, you know, I, I, I don't even want to, I think the Democrats should champion this ordinance. This, this can't come from Dylan.
It, it does sound lovable and I know it's a workshop, so we, we can speak more freely, I, I hope. But, um, the, it doesn't necessarily mean that the million-dollar house in Miss Quamiket is going to be, uh, full-time rental.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm, and I just want it's, once again, I, I don't want to touch the beaches. This is only for all the houses north of Shore Road. So if we could free up whatever it is, 50, 100, even if it was 50 houses. Imagine if you were to build another 50 low-income houses in town. That'd be a win. You'd be, I'd be elated if you did that, right?
There's some, some neighborhoods that are in North Shore Road that are certainly.
Let's say, let's say there's 50 all the North Shore Road. It's still 50 houses that we found. It's 50 families that you found without, and you've probably saved water and saved sewage in doing so. So, and the whole rest.
If you make that premise, it's like a lawyer making this, if this happens, that happens, that automatically this, that's, that's true, the way you present it, but it doesn't mean that.
It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean it's going to happen. It doesn't mean it's going to happen. But every, every coastal town Rhode Island is looking at us.
Who else wants to argue with Dylan?
I, I will argue with him. I, I will argue with him. I will, the, the fellow Republican that he's not talking to. Anyway, I, um, okay, this is the bottom line. The way I see it is we are looking to stop out-of-staters from buying stock in this town for short-term rentals. I think we all agree on that. How, the question is, how do you stop them?
It doesn't have to.
Exactly. You cannot stop anybody from buying a property in this town. We have no legal grounds. Nobody can do that. I can't tell you, you can't buy that house over there because your name is, you're a Republican. Your name is Dylan LaPietra and that house is off limits to you. You can't do that. You just can't. Okay? Um, regulating, are we going to regulate our people to death so that we regulate them right out of existence? You, you can't, we can't do that. I mean, you have a right to do what you want with your home. I, I, I don't understand how that does not sink into your head, Dylan. However, um, my question to you is how, how many days do you typically rent for? Like, is it 120 days of the year, 90 days, 50 days? What's the average out of? Sorry? 90 days? Just the summer months, pretty much. So if, if, if it was limited to say 120 days? Okay. Okay. That's why I'm asking these questions because I want to make sure that I am being fair to everybody. Right? Do you, do you rent all year round? You do. Short-term rental all year round. Okay. So you, you guys are a little bit of an oddity compared to them and that's fine. I mean, hey, you have the right. Okay. So you're longer than that. All right. So, so that answers, so that answers my questions about limiting how many days a year. Let's see, um.
Can you, can you say that again?
I said, um, that answers my question about how many, oh, I'm sorry.
They're not on a microphone.
They said, this gentleman here said he rents his out all year round as a short-term rental. Um, this young lady in the front here in the black does the same thing. Some don't, some do, some don't.
Like what's going on in town is increasing our rentals for the winter. So as of right now, I don't have a weekend open until the second week in November. Because they're going to United Theater, all of the things that came out with United Theater in, I think it was August. People just started booking up all the weekends and they're planning to go to our restaurants and they're planning to go to our theater.
Do you work for United Theater or something?
What?
You don't work for United Theater, do you?
No, it's who she gets her money from here.
Do you work for the United Theater?
No, I don't.
Oh, all right.
I'm just, I'm, I'm impressed with what they've done to the community. I'm impressed with what they've done downtown. If you walk down there, there's a lot of people downtown compared to 10 years ago. So I do keep bringing it up because it's something that I think has really changed downtown.
What type of, uh, rental unit is it? Is it?
I just have a two-bedroom. Yeah, it's a two-bedroom, but I only rent to three people at a time. And I think that's a big, uh, thing here that we're discussing is capacity. Like maybe there could be capacity limits set on how many people can be in these Airbnbs. If you have a four-bedroom, that's obviously a completely different thing than a one or a two-bedroom rental. And maybe there could be some type of capacity because if you're renting long-term or you're renting short-term, i- in my case, I wouldn't be renting to more than two or three, maybe four people. So that capacity would be exactly the same whether I'm doing a short-term rental or I'm doing a long-term. So I don't see that like as a usage problem. The usage problem is the big houses that are down at the beach that are renting over capacity. Like they need, there might need to be restrictions on how many people you can have there and how many cars. And I know, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I don't want parties at my house. I have no parties. No parties is my policy. No dogs is my policy. And because of the statement that you made about the dogs, um, that I had seen before, I went on and I looked at how many rentals are in Westerly that you can even have a pet? And most don't. It, it was like four, if I wanted to go certain weeks with my pet, there were like two choices or four choices. Most people aren't renting to dogs. So I don't, I mean, I understand there was an issue. There was, there was a real issue with the dogs. People don't want, with these nice houses, with my apartment, I don't want dogs in there. I mean, I really am, I don't even want a lot of kids.
Well, not only that, but if someone's allergic that rents after the person with the dog, you've got a problem, right? I, I believe me, I have a dog. I've been around the block with this. I get it. Um, so.
Rose, can I just interject something for a moment? Mr. President, Madam Clerk, I need to leave. I have a family matter I need to attend to.
Okay.
So I ask that, um, people speak into the mics and if you need a portable mic or something, just please, if you're going to talk, use a microphone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good idea. Thank you.
So just the only other thing that I wanted to point out was, you know, either we do them across the town or we don't do them at all. And not doing them at all would create such wreak havoc in this town. Um, I'm not for that. So I, I mean, I just don't see, we, we could over-regulate people to death. If you want to kill it off, that's the way to do it. Again, I'm not for the government telling you what you can and cannot do with your home. If you commit a crime, if somebody abuses your property, what have you, that's what the police are for. That's what all your things you have to fill out to in order to even have one of these. That's why you pay the $500 fee. Nobody wants that for their rental. I get that. I just, for me, it, my concern is the, is only the, the people that are buying multiple houses that are out-of-staters are eating up our stock. But how do you stop that? That, to me, is the question. I don't have an answer for.
Good, good question to put out there.
I, I agree with Rose with a lot of what she said, but one of the biggest issues is this is a beach community. And when you have people renting out a house down at Atlantic Avenue and the rent is, say, $4,000 a week, they're going to bring as many people as they can so it doesn't cost them anything. Right?
All right.
I took the microphone just so you could hear.
We're going to stop the yelling out here, people.
Especially if there's anyone in the, um, home that's following this.
The question was occupancy. I think I would argue that that is not an issue. Most places have max occupancy. I think anyone over occupancy, that's when you end up getting the Sean calls.
Well, that may be something that we have to actually work on about that over occupancy because it is a reality of it happening. That is a reality.
I think it's, I think it's an outlier. I don't think that that's the reality of the situation. I think, I think more times than not, I think the board, I would encourage you to consider this. These are people's private homes. They are not going to let people trash their houses. That's why they.
No one ever wants.
No, 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 hear me out, Mary. There, there's max, there's max occupancy. Every, every one of these people, and I would argue every short-term rental, even out-of-towners, are, they've got brokers handling those houses. They're not us. They're people like Rose that are managing every one of those houses with a max occupancy, no dogs, no parties, no noise after 12:00, yada, yada, yada. It's when you get the 1% that says, screw it, I'm only here for the weekend or I'm only here for two weeks, I'm going to go nuts. And then I'm going to go stalk Taylor Swift's house because I can take a picture on Instagram. That's your 1% that you guys are trying to solve for. And I think just be mindful not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. That's all I'm saying.
No, I, I agree with you on that. I agree with you. I'm just making the point that it still is something that happens. You know, it ma, it may not be the, the anom, well, it, it could be rare. And I know that nobody rents their house out wanting anybody to trash it. And it doesn't matter if it's a short-term rental or a long-term rental. Nobody goes into renting their personal property out with the, with the, you know, um, thought that somebody's going to trash it. Even with the Realtor zone doing credit checks on people, it still happens. It does.
But what frequency? That's, that was the point.
Yeah.
What frequency? Sure. Anything's possible.
Thank you.
Couple of healing.
I think we're getting a little in the weeds here. We cannot end short-term rentals. We, I know it was mentioned, like if we're going to do it, we're going to do it. If not, that's not an option. Shouldn't have been said. Legally, we can't do it. Um, we've, we've been presented with paperwork upon paperwork on legal findings. Exeter wasn't brought up. It is in our, our memo that we got. Um, they were able to get through it because of zoning regulations. That is, that is where we are going to funnel down to. All of the, the noise is noise right now because we're not going to be able to do anything with legally without zoning regulations. So let's, let's look at actually what we're, we're given, the boundary map that nobody necessarily likes. Sorry, Dylan. Instead of doing that, what other options do we have? We do not, in my opinion, have a great zoning overlay going on right now. We're dealing with the Route 1 corridor. There's like a whole, it's a whole thing. So how can we do it without, you know, hiring somebody else to really, like realistically, it, it's a full-time job. So what if we do geographical areas? It was mentioned, you know, south of Shore Road. Um, I don't want to use that example. I live in Bradford. I'm going to use my Bradford as an example. What if Bradford could only have X amount of short-term rentals? And every year, everybody, you have to reapply, it's. It's, whether it's gonna be a lottery, a first come, first served, we don't know. There's that option. Mr. Lacy? Sean? Do the, does the police patrol have their own districts in Westerly?
So you're asking if the individual officers are assigned a certain beat?
Like we have it, basically Westerly's kind of carved out a little bit.
carved out into six different sectors.
Okay, so that would be another kind of idea that popped into my head on a plan that's already implemented. And if we have to, if we're looking per neighborhood or per area, our police department has put the work in. We could do a percentage of units. If we look at, we have 400, I think it's like 399. If we quantify that and we say, okay, this neighborhood has this many houses and this many short-term rentals. Is there an issue? No, okay, move on. Oh, hold on, the percentage of short-term rentals is actually way too high and there's only a certain amount of houses. Maybe we need to look into that a little bit. I see this very case by case, like I said, conditional permitting, special use permitting. But I wanna just, this is a really, really long list of ways. Every single one of you have, has a completely different short-term rental. So every single one of you would hypothetically be looking at different ways to go about it. Mr. Aldrich, do you live in, on Langworthy full-time at that home? If you don't mind me asking? Next door? So, so to me, if I were to be looking at your individual case, I would not be putting your case on a disruptive part of the line. I would probably be looking at somebody that might have two homes on, you know, a budding lots that both have in-law apartments. So now we've got four units and nobody lives there full-time. That's disruptive to me. That's a commercial business to me. That should not be in a residential area. All, like I said before, I don't wanna like keep badgering at it. But everything that I have heard today are not the cases that this ordinance would be for. And I, I just, I just wanna say that out loud. I am not, never will, never ever want to take food out of your mouth or your equity that you're building for your family. If you're passing down things, if you want to stay in Westerly, you have kids in our, whatever, you have family that comes up, that's Westerly. Family coming up from down south to be, that's literally Westerly. I don't want to ever see that change. But there are that 1% and then there is the future of where that needs to be regulated. We have to have regulations on our properties. If my next-door neighbor opened up a gun range because there was no regulations on the property, we'd have a problem. There has to be regulations. That's just how we live in a society. It's, it is what it is. If we all owned 700 acres of land and we were, that's completely different. But most of us are on residential 30, 60. Like, that's just, let's be real on what the actual issue is here.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
If possible, just a couple of things for the committee to think about on zoning. So I think your suggestion on limiting the number of short-term rentals is what's at issue in the case against Narragansett, you can follow up with, on that if you want. But I'm pretty sure that's what they're litigating in that case as it relates to other zoning, which I understand that is the avenue every other town has taken is to attack, ban short-term rentals. So then I think you start getting into arbitrary lines, cherry-picking, treating similarly situated taxpayers differently. So like Mr. Aldrich, I have a, I live in Westerly, I have another house in Westerly. Mine happens to be five minutes away. But I'm involved and I'm there if there's a problem. And I've rented for, I don't know, four or five years already. I've not had one issue there. I comply with every rule that is out there. I'm just five minutes away, it's not next door. So then you start cherry, then you start cherry-picking, is, am I different than he is?
So maybe instead of owner occupied 24/7, Westerly owner.
Agreed entirely. But so my point is for, as you're thinking about this, think about what it is you're trying to address and make sure that whatever you're proposing is worded accordingly. Because I think that, I think you quickly get on a slippery slope of treating similarly situated taxpayers differently. Thank you.
Dylan, you got something?
Thank you, Lisa.
I would just caution, I like, I mean, Alex has good ideas, but I don't want to say they're a little bit idealistic. I mean, we can't, we have to do things that actually work. I mean, in a perfect world, yeah, you could do something like that. But the way it could work, the only way it could work is if, and I know nobody likes to hear that arbitrary line in the sand and it doesn't sound good when you say it that way. Really, it's the only way we could do this. I mean, you have to, I mean, we talk about grandfather people in because you've been doing it for three years. Or I've been doing it for three years, you couldn't possibly take it away. These people have been doing it for three generations. Okay, there was a whole community built on this. And Lisa, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Go ahead.
So the other problem with the, your favorite arbitrary line in the sand is why should people be prevented from doing short-term rental in the downtown area? In the historic area where there are less hotels than there are even down at the beach? Right? And you're, you're going to restrict that and restrict people from renting in that area where they wanna be close to town, walk downtown?
Because they were never there before.
I, I understand, but our downtown was never what it was before either.
It was.
No, no, it was. Hey, I grew up here.
Yeah, see, I forgot about the United Theater, I'm sorry, United Theater. Yeah, I said, they have some great, go ahead.
I tried waving my hand, but that didn't work, so I walked up, excuse me. First, I'd like to move that we strike older gentlemen from the record.
Yeah. You're younger than me.
But I just wanted to make it clear again, our home, which we live in, single-family home where we've converted the back, it's never gonna be part of Westerly's housing stock except for us living in it, whether we're an Airbnb or not. So it's never gonna add to the housing stock. We are north of Shore Road, not by a lot, but we are north of Shore Road. And I would very much, you know, vehemently disagree with any proposal that says that we eliminate Airbnbs north of Shore Road. I hope that you do not consider that further. I know it was in the proposals. So I just wanted to be clear on those two issues. Thank you again.
And I'm gonna make a suggestion that would satisfy every single person in this room right now. Obviously, anyone north of Shore Road was saying if owner occupied, you could keep doing what you're doing. So that's, it may be eight out of 10 of you. So what we could add is if you're a Wesley resident who has multiple houses, you could choose one to be an Airbnb. I don't know if we could legally do that, I'll have to ask Mr. Conley. But that would take care of the other two or three of you, so everybody can go home. Okay? Well, if that works, if that works, and I still want to let it go in the, in the communities where it always has been part of the community and that's like Miss Quamick, okay? You could still do, you could buy 10 houses there and do it there. But for everybody else, owner occupied, you're okay. Lisa, you own a couple of houses. Peter, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, you own a few houses. You could choose one of them to be an Airbnb, get one of them. And that might work. Only for Wesley residents now.
Mike, you got something?
Yeah, I'd say. Yeah, good.
I mentioned this when I was up here earlier. I know, Ms. Healy, your comment was, you're really thinking about not just where we are right now, but really like the future. I mentioned the idea of having it like a liquor license, like the town can only have so many of them. And then you, you know, if one person comes off, then another comes on. I don't know all the legalities behind that. But maybe there's a way to think about how you prevent that future by balancing it. I still feel like, you know, we own our property, we pay our taxes. To your point, we should be able to do, you know, within parameters and legally, what, what we want with our properties. But I'm trying to think about the, the issue that is, you know, at hand here and maybe that is one solution versus trying to draw a line. Maybe it's just, it's a number. It's a number of rentals that are STRs. Just a thought.
Thanks.
So just to kind of give a sense of where I'm at on this, I'd say where I'm at right now is that we would ban non-residents from having short-term rentals north of Shore Road. And that's about where I'm at. Ban non-residents from having short-term rentals north of Shore Road.
I like that, I'm fine with that, yeah. Okay.
Can we do it? Now let's turn to the solicitor.
Well, that could be the same issue that we have with the town beach stickers. We might run into some issues legally because a property taxpayer and a resident have the same rights to the town beach, Mr. Conley, which I don't like that either, but.
Yeah, so Mike raised a good question of equity. If someone from modest state has a second home, they want to live in it for Christmas Day to Memorial, Memorial Day, can they do a short-term rental? If they're in the, in the town, downtown area?
There's certainly a way to structure that, right? That's a, need to think about a little bit because you can get to the right language, I think, to be able to get there. You know, in response to some of the conversation about how do you regulate the out-of-towners from coming in and buying the property? And you're right, it's, Councilor Van Dover was right, you can't say to somebody, you can't buy that house. And I'm gonna get to your question as well, Councilor. But the template that, for lack of a better word, the template that everybody's been looking at for a year or so, addresses that through the use of owner occupant and town resident. So the ordinance addresses the, how do you, you know, how do you get at that number of north of Shore Road and a non-resident? I think if you look at it more through what is better-understood language and you avoid that whole taxpayer issue of non-residents and that we run to is by thinking of it as owner occupant. So if you're an owner occupant, you're, by definition, you're, you're not a non-resident if you're an owner occupant. So that, that gets you there. You know, it's a path to get to that kind of standard. Secondly.
Can I stop you there, Bill? Owner occupant, you're a taxpayer, but are you a resident? No, 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 if you live in New York and it's your second home.
Well, if you're an occupant though, if you, if you're occupying it, then.
For how many months? How many days, 183 days?
Well, you can, you can look at the details of that, but again, that's the path to it as an owner occupant. The other way of, of addressing that residency issue by if you get two houses and is that the template now says that a town resident is the owner of the property and a full-time resident of the town of Wesley and resides in the town of Wesley whenever the residential short-term rental is in use. So that's, that's exactly what you've been describing. I've got my second house, I'm five, 10 minutes away, wherever you are. That's, that covers, that essentially covers that circumstance. And that's a solve for that piece of, I really do think it is. So the owner occupant, you could look at that as a way of addressing the non-resident issue as President Duhamel just noted that you might need to tighten up exactly what that means and what you want it to mean. But it does get at that non-resident issue in a slightly different path without, without creating a lot of additional issues to the kinds of property rights that Councilor Van Dover was talking about.
So if I could try to boil that down a little bit, it sounds like if we combine the language in this proposed ordinance draft around owner occupancy and town residency wherein they shall reside within the town of Wesley whenever the residential short-term rental is in use, we can get to the point where the only people who could effectively own a short-term rental within whatever zone we are designating that for are town residents.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
May I?
You're gonna have to write that one out because it's mobile language.
Michael, I would just add one thing. Those, those properties you're talking about under your own registration requires brokers that are not owner occupied to have a broker in town so they are the agent for that situation. So that doesn't work. Because by your own rules, you're saying that if you're not owner occupied, you have to go on your website, register, get a local broker like Montchase down in Watch Hill or wherever. Non-residence is what he's talking about.
Alright. We'll disregard that, so.
What we're, what we're discussing is actually looking at that to see if that should be changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what you're doing.
I want to piggyback, I like where we're headed now. This workshop is picking up steam now, so this is good. Don't, now I want to take it a step further. I'm gonna go real quick and then you want to. Alright, so we're there now, you've got one more issue. What about the person who lives in Westerly but wants to buy seven houses in Airbnb and more? Are we gonna allow that? I mean, because by your definition, you could still do that. So can we take what Mike was said and then maybe add, okay, you're Wesley resident, you get, it doesn't have to be your primary house, but maybe you only get one. I mean, because, let's face it, if you've got seven houses in Westerly, you're a multi-multi-millionaire just on assets alone. You're not, you don't need, you're not trying to pay the mortgage if you got, if you could afford seven houses in Westerly, alright? So let's say everybody here, you've got one extra house? Okay. But maybe we could add only one per customer type thing if you're Wesley resident. Just throwing out there as an idea.
That's a good idea.
Licensing? We, instead of doing a business license, it would be a certain license and then you would only be able to have one license, is that?
Well, I mean, we currently have that registration, which is really in the nature of a license, right? In order to be able, in order to be able to engage in the use. So I think it's a good analogy to look at that registration really as licensing. And the other part of that, as the town manager has shown since that's been put in place, since the program's been put in place, it's a, it's a pretty robust enforcement component to it. So think about it almost like, like your driver's license, right? Or registration, you know, you can, you can revoke, you have to abide by the rules, you have to abide by the regulations of having that license. If you don't, you lose it. Now, the, without, without committing to it because there's not a lot of models out there that look at it the way you just did, Councilor Petra, but with, you know, combination of looking at it as zoning and licensing, their municipalities do get some discretion in licensing regulations. So I don't know, I'll be honest, I don't know the answer off the top of my head about, can, because you treat it like a license, can you say, pursue it to a license in the town of Wesley, you can only have three? You can only have two? I'm inclined to say, yes, you can probably do that, but I would like to, I would like to follow up on that a little bit before I give you, you know, a definitive answer.
And Pauline, do you want to say something while you're waiting?
Just a question quick, so just to go back to my situation, you know, I am a Wesley resident, not full-time, like, like seven days a week, but during the summer, just on the weekends.
So just to, just to clarify that, are you a Wesley, when you file your tax return, do you file Rhode Island?
I'm Rhode Island resident.
Wesley, Wesley resident and your tax return? Okay, you're Wesley resident then, yes.
So, but my, my other house that I go to when I'm, during, during the summertime is in Massachusetts, is an hour away. Like per, per the thing, you know, so I don't live in Westerly when my other house is occupied. So it's that, you know what I mean? Like, so I'm just trying to understand what you're being specifically at. If you're just hitting, you have to live in Westerly to have the other house.
You'll be fine.
You know, or do I, is that forcing me into that now, having to hire a broker in Westerly? You know, to then monitor my Westerly house? You know, so I think that's, that's what you're saying.
You're a Wesley resident, we'll figure it out for you. If you file, if you file a tax return in Rhode Island and you say my house is Tan Oak Street, you're a Wesley resident, this ordinance will not mess you up. Now, if, if you come here, if you're actually a Massachusetts resident who has a joint return with your husband, now it's different.
Second house and you're a non-resident, whatever, but people can get around that. I'm just saying with tax, you know, because if they have the second house and you spend more than six months, you know.
You have, you've seen our voter logs, right?
With multiple houses, I'm a specific person. That's where you get around it, you know.
Just to.
So I'm a little uncomfortable carving out, if you're a Wesley resident and you got a free pass, if you're not a Wesley resident, and we're gonna define what a residency, is it 183 days or is it?
Yeah, what is a Wesley resident?
We need to work this one out legally, I believe. Mike, did you want to add something to your, your idea?
Come on.
One of the issues that we're dealing with is our insurance being.
One of the issues that we're dealing with is our insurance being short-term rental. We have a hard time finding insurance for it, right? So that's another issue that we deal with. I don't know if you guys have that problem, but. Short-term rental insurance is very difficult and very expensive.
We're the town council, not State Farm.
I understand that. This is where I'm going with this. You need to target the irresponsible owners and the nuisance rentals. Need to put wording in that ordinance, however it's gotta be, to target those. That's the only way you're gonna be able to regulate, because you can't ban the short-term, it's never gonna go away, that's always gonna be here. But you need to target those irresponsible owners and those nuisance rentals. If it continues, then you, you know, you take their license away and that's it. That's. I mean, you're spitballing a lot of things, but you have to target those.
Yeah, but just to clarify what I said, we do not have issues with irresponsible owners. We do not. Just to make it clear, you guys keep hopping back on. We do not, less than 1% of 1%, we have a problem with, and it's dealt within the current ordinance and handled immediately. There is not an issue with irresponsible owners, not at all. The situation I explained with someone, you know, living next door to a commercial property because there's a new family in every single week and the whole family's there, that's not irresponsible. They're doing it legitimately, they're doing nothing wrong, the people that are staying there. It's just you get a new neighbor every single week, that's a whole new family coming in. They're not irresponsible. The ordinance calls out and specifically spells out how to handle irresponsible owners, which we do.
Right. But that's the issue that we're having with the insurance is the liability, because, you know, there's always taking arrogance for, you know, obviously because of the URI students and they have the big parties and that, it falls back on us, just like the uninsured motorists do. That's the one thing I wanted to bring up, and I hope that, you know, that gets spelled out in that.
Go ahead, Mike. Did you want to speak? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just one question, if there's been any thought on homes that have been purchased in town, a bunch to house short-term rentals for workers that come in to work at the hotels in the summers? So what does that mean for the town and those homes?
They're probably 30 days plus.
Those are worker housing, that's a different animal.
They're not counted in this definition.
I was gonna say one point to Mr. Connolly, I fully expect, no matter what ordinance we pass, it gets sued. I mean, that's automatic. As soon as one person loses a dollar, we're gonna get sued, so just.
America's a great country. America's a great country.
Yeah, so, I mean, let's not be worried about, you know, passing something because we're afraid, I mean, we're gonna do our best to give you the ordinance you could work with, but obviously we're getting sued. I mean, that's a given.
We have an obligation of the taxpayers to try to avoid some of them. If it's that blatant, I don't think we can continue with it, but. So we have some options on the table, some suggestions on how to implement short-term rentals, limit short-term rentals to one person, one per person. And.
There's one last point that we didn't go over, Chris.
What's that?
Sean, just to jump ahead of you, one per person, North of Shore Road. I still, I'm still in favor of the Wild, Wild West down the beach, I'm sorry. It's a different animal down there and it's a different economy. So if, you know, everybody in here will be taken care of, obviously, every single one of you. But down the beach, you know, if you have an LLC and you buy 15 houses, that's the way, that's what it was set up for. These houses aren't even winterized, most of them. I mean, that's what they're there for. So I want to keep my arbitrary line in the sand, so to speak, but everybody in this room will be included to be okay on the ordinance as well.
It's tough to have your finger in the wind and have everyone happy, because the next meeting's gonna be those other people. Then those are the ones that are gonna sue you, so you gotta have a real basis. But West of Shore Road has a different standard, and I'm not in favor of having BlackRock come into Westerly and buy up all these neighborhoods like you hear about on Nevada or whatever, so.
So.
You're raising a good point, and I don't, I'm not discounting it, but.
So to get back to my original question, like, what are we solving for? Sean made exactly what my issue was. He said, we have 400 short-term rentals with less than 1% of being the problem. So why are we here? I don't understand.
Worried about.
I don't, I get the future, but wouldn't a master plan for the town make more sense to like spend time on than a short-term rental issue that's not even, by Sean's own admission, an issue? I mean, it's not an issue.
The performance is certainly highest, the performance standards for rental units, but beyond that is the loss.
But says who, Chris? We don't have data.
Sorry, could I?
Beyond that is losing housing.
Says who? We have no data.
Could I address something really quick? I interpreted Sean very differently. My interpretation wasn't that less than 1% are problematic, it's that less than 1% are breaking the rules. Even the rule followers are producing some problematic effects in the communities just by virtue of having, just by virtue of doing commercial activity, yeah. Such as renting the houses to people.
Well, I would disagree. I would disagree with the 20-car parking. That's against minimum housing. There's no way that house could have, could support that, so.
Right, but I'm saying it happens. If you go to the beach in the summers, Dylan's Wild, Wild West Zone, you'll find, you can find 15 cars in some lot, right? You can, because they can be extended, family might be coming down for the day, or a cookout. If someone has a cookout and they have a graduation party, you're gonna have 20 cars in someone's yard. But this is an ongoing, continuous thing, so.
Sean.
Pretty in-town, somewhere at a house, and, you know, it's the one-off. Someone has a wedding at their house or something, there's something of such.
Does our current system tell us if one owner is listed for more than one short-term rental? Do we have a filter for that at all?
I'd have to find, there probably is some sort of filter. I can see the issue on one per person, there's always a way to beat the system, right? So I have, I buy two, my wife buys two, I put two of my kid's name, I put three in another LLC name. I could own my 15 rental properties, short-term, if I wanted to, right? I mean, there's a way around it.
So maybe I should have ended up putting, if there wasn't so many spelling errors, I would have put this up there. But how does it actually affect me, right? Social and community and economic and housing. That's, if we're looking at the nuisance side of things being good, awesome. Then we're not trying to change what's going on. But we have to be realistic about the whole thing, about it is, it does and will displace people through unit conversion, whatever. It's going to commercialize our residential neighborhoods. That's what's going to happen. We're going to pull in to, we're gonna go to Cumberland Farms and go onto Cross Street, and we're gonna go back there, and all of these homes that have historically been filled with majority elderly population who is raising their children here, yada, yada, they're all gonna be commercialized units. And if we're having a hard time bringing folks to Westerly now with our beautiful neighborhoods and amenities that we have, how are we going to bring people here when there could be multiple mini-hotels where their kids are riding their bikes, where they're walking around with their walker? And then honestly, the biggest issue is the social issue, and it's just not knowing who your neighbor is. It's going out for a walk in your neighborhood after dinnertime with your family and just not knowing. Something that we, as a community, we are so well-knit together, we all know everybody, we know our neighbors. I mean, when I moved here, literally, I said, wow, everybody knows everybody, because it's so true. Keeping that community whole is really important to me. Not penetrating that bubble that is already very unstable. It was brought up, whether it's schooling, whatever, whatever it is, it's not stable. But right now, I know that if I go home tonight and my neighbor is having a birthday party and it's starting to get a little late, I know my neighbor. I know I can go over there and say, hey, listen, it's getting a little loud, my kids have school. If I didn't know that person, would I feel comfortable enough knocking on a random person's door saying, hey, my kid's got school tomorrow, can you guys stop? Like, yes, it should be fine, but do we live in a world right now where that's fine? Some people will have different answers there. So when I talk about, like, where I see the problems and stuff, you're right. I know that, I mean, that was the first time I heard about parking tickets from the first speaker, Brenda. I had, I've spoken with Mr. Lacy, there isn't calls going out, there isn't arrests being made, and that is huge and needs to be highlighted. But just because it's working as a whole right now doesn't mean that this is not going to continue to change. There is more third-party vendors coming out with more stipulations. The state is coming out with stuff. If we're not doing our job and we're not getting ahead of a problem, what are we, what are we doing?
All right, very good. I think we need to wrap up some questions to go on to the next.
I want to respond to Sean and that loophole issue, because that's a real issue.
All right, well, that's one of the ones that we need answers on, and we can shoot from this, so we can have Connolly.
I might have an answer for it.
Well, why don't we put it on the table, then we can talk about those answers. So one is limiting the number of short-term rental licenses per person.
Per person, and you make a good point, and I was just thinking of that. Obviously, if you want to put a few houses in your kids' names, we can't stop that, but, I mean, that's up to them. But we could say something like, if you have a financial interest in any other, it's one per financial interest. That could catch if they want to create multiple LLCs with their name to try to do it, or even a married partner, because you have a financial interest with your married, you know, joint return, whatever, however you want to say it. So we could probably catch some of the people who are trying for multiple rentals, using that, if you have a financial interest in anything else, so it's one per. See, there's gotta be, with Mr. Connolly, I'm kinda looking for something, there you go, it could be done, all right.
All right, so let's give some homework to Mr. Connolly, our solicitor. So limit short-term licenses per person or entity, as Dylan has just said. Two, limit short-term rentals to owner-occupied Wesley residents. Three, limit short-term rental areas south of Shore Road unless owner-occupied Wesley resident.
Say it one more time, Chris.
Number three, I had limit short-term rental areas to be south of Shore Road.
I think you mean north of Shore Road. Is that what you said? I think you mean north.
I was allowing them north, south of Shore Road. You want to say? Prohibit?
Yeah, all right, so.
I said it wrong, that limit short-term rental areas north of Shore Road. Limit slash prohibit short-term rental areas north of Shore Road unless owner-occupied Wesley resident. These are questions we're just throwing out.
If they can be legally done.
That's a good question, too, is should owner-occupied include Wesley residents? Or can it be separate? And I think that goes to the first question, how many licenses per person? I'm not putting on here the standards of operation that we all, all rental units follow, because that's not on the table, we're not changing it. You have to follow it. What else do we have? Any counselors?
Did we want zoning to get involved?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Short-term, I'll say again, limit short-term rental licenses to be approved by zoning special use permit.
When do we talk about that? Do we want to?
Alex brought it up.
I was gonna stick with more zoning, I'm not sure.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Zoning and special use.
Got you, okay.
You have to demonstrate that the property is sufficient to the use you're proposing. Any other things? Okay? You know, if it's not too much trouble.
Big entities that are coming in and buying up multiple houses, are they licensing under one license or do they have to license every single address that they own? They have to do every single address? All right.
I think we captured the big questions. We had a great discussion on the operation and what works, and we gained support from Mr. LaPietra on some of those issues.
It's one better than expected, if you ask me about it.
So this has been successful in that regard. And I think. Sure.
But my suggestion is that the Airbnb units that are presently in place and properly registered and adherence with the laws and regulations should be grandfathered.
That's a no, but thank you.
Well, if you don't grandfather, you're gonna be dealing with lawsuits from people that invested to start up Airbnb.
You know what, we're here to raise questions and get answers in the future, so why don't we put that out there? Is grandfathering allowed?
Thank you. And again, strike the elder gentleman.
It is something that, when I talked with Lauren Carson, she said that that's what they've been working on with the grandfathering, with zoning in hand-in-hand, and that's actually how things are actually working.
So there's 399 licenses as of today. We should have that answer. Yes.
So just to, oh, Carrie Dunn, Seven South S6 Drive, Westerly. When these legislations, ordinances, or whatever get put in place, can you be cognizant, please, of the amount of time in order to institute that? Because if we are running on a platform like Airbnb or VRBO or something similar, we are detrimentally affected by canceling any reservations. So let's say right now, and I only operate in the summer, so I am just a summer rental. If I already have rentals booked and partially paid for for next summer, there are cancellation repercussions as a owner, as a renter, you know, proprietor, let's say. So let's make sure we take into account some timing regulations to that. I also want to say, in general, discussing all of this, I think there's been some great talk. I still haven't heard how we are going to hold the delinquent owners accountable. I have recently found out that there are three rentals in my neighborhood. I am north of Shore, Route 1 where I live. There are three. I would have never known they existed. These are people around the corner. This is a neighborhood I drive in, walk in, run in. I live here. I would have never known that they were short-term rentals. I don't keep track of the cars there. They're normal, two cars in the driveway, maybe one's white today, one's blue tomorrow. I don't pay attention, I don't give a crap. They have not made a peep, they have not done anything.
The town manager had addressed this earlier.
However, one more point, please.
Okay.
One of the ones in my neighborhood is not a town resident. That is the one that I have heard other neighbors say there could have, there have been problems in the past. Does it happen a lot? No. But that is where we have the problems. It is these delinquent owners, they are not here, and I actually looked up the property. It is managed by a property management company nationwide. That property management company also does not have anybody in the area. That bothers me, because I am here, I live five minutes away from my property and I have cameras on my property. I count cars, I count people, and I have rules for ordinances on noises and everything in my, in my rules for my house. I don't like the neighbor right down the street who is allowed to have a whole house rental with nobody here accountable to take a complaint. Call the police, I'm totally fine with that. Anybody wants to call the police on me, totally fine with that. I will take what comes through me, and I will deal with it, but I can guarantee you, I'll be there before the police. I have an issue with the people, that one house that I. I have an issue with the people, that one house that I know of. They're the ones that are causing the problems, they're the ones giving the rest of us negative feedback. I want to take care of them. So great, limited to one house, limited north of Shore Road, south of Shore Road, whatever. We're still not taking into account that person who is still causing the problems and allowed to get away with it.
So let me, let me, uh, let me just say that we have a system, the town has a system that, that is monitoring this. I would ask if you could, not on air here, but gi- give the address to the town manager to see if it's on the radar. And if it was caught by the system that we have it, if it has not been caught by our system, then, then we should make changes.
Well, it should have definitely been caught.
Every single, uh, violation of what our current ordinances have.
So I want that person limited, not me.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't understand in the verbiage, if we can clarify this in the ordinance, I, I mean, obviously there's an ordinance coming. Owner-occupied or town resident or?
Local broker.
Well, what's a broker, like, like, I'm just a regular person, I manage my own property and I'm.
No, but for the example that you're giving us, where he's using the nationwide broker that doesn't care, we, something like that needs to have a local broker.
And then also, um, a town resident, let's say, during the time that your unit is rented. So let's say I only rent my unit for 90 days, June, July and August. I need to be in Westerly and manage my property, June, July and August. Uh, that, that's the verbiage and the wording, I think that that would help solve some of the issues.
Already.
That's, it's not 100% clear.
Yes.
Okay.
It's just not being enforced from what you're describing.
And the section that I wanted to, it is, it's section C, it's called enforcement, enforcement. And that is where, like your first question, where you were saying, what's happening to those individuals? Um, the program that, that, the fee increase, the 500, that program is hopefully going to run as a more user-friendly interface, where if you say, okay, well, 123 Main Street, I can go in there and look at it and say, oh, they're not even on here, let me send an email or do it.
So you should be able to tell me today, how many prop, how many short-term rentals registered in the town of Westerly are non-resident and/or property management?
Yeah, that's, that's what I had just asked too.
But I do want to caution the whole LLC thing that Dylan had said. I'm an LLC, I'm a town resident, but it's only for liability purpose. I am a single proprietor, single unit owner, but I'm an LLC.
Yeah.
So just caution the verbiage of that.
100% you heard.
But I don't want to be lumped in as a.
An investor.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. The, um, the way that the penalties are written out, there's, it's a, it's a hefty original thing.
Oh, I read the penalties, but.
It is, it is in there, but if we don't know about it, like you said, if we don't know and if they ran under the radar, that's like one of the biggest things is where we can go on all of these websites and it can, it can talk to our program and it can say, oh yeah, this is there, but what about the ones that are, you know, underground?
So provide that to the manager, that address, and we'll see if the system has got them online, got them.
Well, you should know, if, if, when you have to register, doesn't, don't you have to put in who the manager is or the local resident or whoever it is? So it should be.
You're saying that there's an address that's not registered though?
I don't know if it's registered or not.
Okay.
I'm just saying, there is a house in my neighborhood managed by a property management company that is a nationwide, non-local, nobody here.
So if they're registered, they would have had to give they would have had to give a, a local.
Broker, the local broker. That actually brings up a good point, Alex, that you might, maybe, maybe the board, the board should consider reaching out to like all of the brokers. There's not only what, five, six of them in town? Because those are the local representatives and agents of those out of staters. So start charging those guys the fee for not showing up. My guess is the nationwide was local, they used to be downtown, so they went national, right? And who took over their stuff, Rose, you know, do you know? Who, or, so like, there's a local guy, so start charging the brokers.
I got one question to start on.
Send that to Connolly at the.
So what is the question?
Well, I mean, there is one.
For Mary, Dylan, let her, she was in my ear.
Oh, no, I was, I was saying to add to Connolly's list of things, we should include talking about having a local Westerly broker.
That's part of the ordinance, am I?
Part of the current ordinance now.
It's already in it.
Okay.
The national one, again.
And a national can have a local representative.
A local representative.
Right, I think that's what we have to kind of tight, tighten up.
Well, there's no tightening if, if they're, have an address in Westerly.
I, I would, I want to do one last thing, I would be curious, bec- only because this has been happening for four or five years now and some residents have gotten wiser to fact, well, you know, I get the same guys every year, why use VRBO, why use Airbnb? You're gonna come back to me, or you throw me $1,000. How many short-term rentals are, are out there that are not registered with anyone? And forget about the town not getting their $500, probably the state one island's getting the income tax, probably the United States Treasury is getting the income tax. I, I mean, are there 50 around town, 60? We don't know, you know, and I, I don't know if that software could actually, I don't know how you track it.
If they, if it's completely underground, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, totally, but it's gotta be happening.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that I think it's happening as much as you may think it's happening. I can tell you the program tracks any, all these listings, including social media. So if you're trying that way, it's gonna flag it and we get alerted instantly.
Okay, so we have a four six questions now, the time to implement the new ordinance I put down there is something that's important to, to address. If you want to relive what a local broker qualification is, that's, that's fine, but does the coun, the council want to do that? Okay. And as far as, uh, Airbnb is not registered, we're gonna have one test of an address. To see, see how, see if it's registered or not. That's it that I have, any other counselors, I mean, any counselors have any other things to put down? Done? Bill, if you're out there, you can call in.
Does anybody else have anything? I, I know this is not my place to ask at all.
I just want to be clear on the, when, when I mentioned, it was suggested to me that like, you've done on the days, and I say 9120, doesn't?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a good one.
It, it doesn't, I'm not referring to listing your property for 90 or 120, you can list your property year-round. It's just a total, the number of nights, because the program will track the number of nights each property is rented and it, uh, accumulated a total of which they're renting it for. So it's total accumulation of nights, it doesn't mean you can only list it for three months in the summer. You can list it all the time, it's how many nights a year are you actually renting? Chris, could we talk about that for like 30 seconds or something?
Of course, I, that, I thought that had interest, um, I thought it was by season, you're saying it's.
It's, well, you can do, you can certainly set it up any way you want, but it was, it was limited number of times, because it prevents somebody that's looking to rent, meaning try to get 300 nights a year in their place from doing that. And it prevents people from just buying up properties to do that. I, I don't think that solves anything, Sean, but it certainly gives some relief to some residents who, especially down south of Shore Road, who want to have a nice, you know, they, they want to be in a nice quiet neighborhood and they probably haven't rented. You know, they, they don't have to, it's not just summer anymore, like people were saying, it's, it's May, June, July, all the way through November maybe, so. It would give some relief to people who do, who do want to just, you know, they understand in the summertime that it's gonna be an Airbnb, obviously, but I, it's, I don't, I, but I don't think it solves anything, but I do like it in a way, I do, 120. Well, it does, it limits what they can, I mean, keep in mind, the, the average hotel, if you look at nationally, they try to get a 60% occupancy rate. So if you take 60 times, well, you know, 365 days a year, what's that, 190 days? That's a hotel, try to get, try to rent their rooms 190 nights a year. And, and that's good, that's a profitable margin, so I don't. If we did do that, it'd have to be more than 90 days, I mean, that would be on the low end, but, but it's worth an argue, with a discussion maybe, I don't know, you guys.
So that'll be the, the seventh point I made, 90, how many days per year is acceptable? And how do you monitor it and enforce it? If it's, if it can be.
As long as we can get enough people to the United Theater in February, that would probably cut into that demographic. Yeah, I'd love it.
Nashville, Nashville North, right? There you go.
I, my great-grandfather was the original projectionist at the United Theater. We got pictures that I could probably get paid for today in the family album.
So that, without any other things, did I miss anything, town manager? Okay, so we, we got some work to do and, uh, we'll have another workshop. I like this format better, I, you know, it was a lot more back and forth, got more questions, more, uh, more input. So we'll try this again, hopefully, at, at another workshop. That said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Which may and second by Council of Petra, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Adjourned.